I'd like to call to order the March 9th, I can't believe it's already March, meeting of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee. We are being recorded this evening. Thank you very much. We'll begin with any public participation. All righty, seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes from our February 9th, 2023 meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
We also need February 2nd as well. There were two sets of minutes in the folder.
February 2nd?
Oh, okay, yes, there was. It's not on the agenda, but you did distribute them.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from our February 2nd, 2023 meeting.
Okay, any discussion on those? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All righty, I would entertain a motion from somebody to go into executive session.
I make a motion, I make a motion to enter into executive session to return to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body and the chair so declares for the Juul settlement. Also, executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or specific law for the approval of this executive session minutes from our February 9th, 2023 meeting, and we will be returning to open session.
Second.
All righty, roll call. Jason?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Summer?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Your executive session minutes are with your materials this evening, if you could. We'll go over to the conference room, so we don't have to... Okay. Thank you for bearing with us. The next item on the agenda dovetails from what we just did, and I would turn it over to you.
Sure, as you may recall, we entered into a action with Friends Law Associates regarding Juul Company and vaping for monies associated with either education or reading devices or other social emotional supports necessary. And so I'm asking the committee to vote to accept the settlement of $11,570 and the settlement document to be signed by the school committee chair.
I'll make a motion to accept the Juul settlement.
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Do you have that with you? I'll sign it tonight.
We're gonna have to, they sent us a template, and so we're gonna turn it into a soluble PDF.
Okay, perfect.
Send it out.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, Silver Lake Youth Cheer Flyer.
So in your packet, you'll see a youth cheer flyer, and we received a request from the Silver Lake Youth Cheer Organization. This is a local organization. This is not Silver Lake Regional High School Cheerleaders or Middle School Cheerleaders, but they are local children. And they are asking us if we would send out this flyer to students in the middle school.
Have we received this in the past? Is this the annual?
We have.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve and distribute the flyer from Silver Lake Cheer.
All right. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Perfect. Thank you. All righty, principals' reports.
Hi, everyone. I know I'm being formal, but I want to let you know that next Thursday, we are having a staff versus student versus staff basketball game, and all the proceeds will go to the Aiden Ramsey Scholarship Fund. You're more than welcome to stop by.
What time is it?
Five o'clock to six thirty.
And that's it this evening?
Yeah, that's it.
Wow. Thank you.
Where did we find her? That's fantastic.
High school's very much the same. We don't have any formal requests this week, or I can send the school committee vote. We are hosting a memorial 5K in honor of Aiden Ramsey on March 18th. You can sign up through Kingston Rec to participate. You can also register the day of the event. I am joined today, though, by one of our city health officers, Erin Flaherty. She's our school co-director, and she is here to share with the committee some school updates.
So we have March Mania, and currently we plan for the upcoming week, which is March Mania. March Mania consists of an inclusive week long period with different days and opportunities to dress up. At the end of the week, on Friday, there will be a pep rally held in the gym with raffles, games, and prize money awarded to a class. And in Ramsey's 5K, we are planning to put together a raffle where students and staff can guess an amount of gold coins in a jar during all lunchways and during the pep rally. The winner will be awarded, and all proceeds will be donated to the Ramsey Scholarship. And then we're planning in May to do a Project Positivity, which will be guided towards Mental Health Month. And then we are working with NHS and Red Cross Club to organize a board drive in May.
Awesome. Excellent. Very good. Thank you. Okay, that was very brief this evening.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to take some items under order this evening.
Certainly.
I would like us to take the Legislative Agents Report, followed by the budget discussion in possible role.
Second.
That is my motion.
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
So last time we met, we were still waiting for House One, which in this legislative cycle would be the governor's first pass at the state budget for FY24. Governor Healy did release her budget last Wednesday, and I have to say that the vote that this committee took several years ago to support the Student Opportunity Act was finally come home to pay Silver back, Silver Lake back some extraordinary dividends. From my take of the cherry sheet, and I'm sure Christine's gonna dig into this a little bit deeper than I, we're seeing an 8.8% increase in state funding for next year, right here at Old Silver Lake. Regional transportation is being funded at 90% level. Like, we only saw it in 80%, which was basically level funded. So the outcome is around a $750,000 worth of state funding for our school for the next fiscal year. And because of the held harmless policy at the state level, we will never retreat back from this extraordinary level of state support. This provides us an opportunity as a school committee to invest in our programming and our students here, while at the same time allowing a little bit of breathing room at the local level for our towns to take their assessments at a reasonable level this year. So very happy with this, again, first ending of a nine-man game. It still needs to go through the Ways and Means Committee of the Senate, then the full Senate, the Ways and Means Committee of the House, and the full House, and then it comes together for what's a consensus budget between the two chambers, and finally back to the governor. So there's actually opportunity here for us to see even greater improvement. But this is one of the most generous first passes we've seen. And again, it's because of the Student Opportunity Act finally kicking in for us. That really looked at four areas. It looked at special education funding. It looked at English language learning. It looked at low-income students. And it also took into account the increases we had seen in insurance about five or six years ago. We saw some double-digit increases for a few years, and that took communities by surprise. So we put all of those items into the Student Opportunity Act, trying to level the playing field a little bit. And as many of you have lamented over the years, Silver Lake hasn't really felt that. Last year, we had over a 5% increase from the state, and this year, we're now seeing close to a 9% increase from the state. So again, I hope that the committee tonight, as we look at the budget, can really lean into how can we utilize these funds, again, to support the students of our middle schools and high schools, and at the same time, look into the burden we're placing on our localities as well.
Excellent. I, this is one of the more positive updates you've given us in a long time.
I have to say that a tremendous amount of work has gone into this. The Superintendent's Association, the School Committee Association, in collaboration with our legislators and other interest groups who are concerned with equity being spread to urban, rural, and suburban communities across the state. It's been a long time coming, and it's very satisfying to finally see how it can affect our students here at Silver Lake.
Yep, yep, finally being heard. Thank you. Christine, would you like to follow up with that?
We're gonna try to just go with the flow here. See how you wanna do this. Let me just try to... I had planned on going over the assessments first based on
Would love to.
what we, the budget that we presented tonight. It's gonna be able to screen, so that'll help. So as you know, when I calculate the assessments, the budget is my starting point. So that's kind of where I start. And then I have to look at the items that are not included as net school spending items. Transportation equipment, things like that are not included. And then from that number, that net number, I then start looking at our revenues. And our revenues, we had some, we had some changes this year just because things have changed. And once we get to, after we get past that, we still have to look at the minimum contribution by town. And minimum contribution by town did change again. The share, let's see, that is on slide 28. I have to say, this is one of the more pleasant assessments to calculate. So minimum contributions calculated by DOR, and what that amount is given to us is the amount that the towns have to contribute towards the educational programs that we're taking care of. And if you look on this slide, you'll see that we did have a significant increase this year. Well, the increase in the minimum contribution went to 8.4 million. It was an increase of 774,000 in total between the three towns. And then down below, we see the comparison year-over-year between changes that have happened for us. And then if we want to go into 29, thank you. So this is actually how I calculate the assessments. The steps that are included, step, you know, one starts with the budget, then I reduce it by the non-net school spending items. Then we start to look at what is left to be assessed. The first thing is the minimum contribution. That's been predetermined for us. Once we get past that, we then have to assess all those, the balance of the budget that has not yet been funded. And that is done purely based on enrollment on our October 1 numbers. The next step, number three, has been left in there. We don't use that quite so. Thank you. Then we start adding back those items that were reduced, and transportation being one of them. So we add back the net amount of transportation. As Jason said, the reimbursement for that this year was 90%. That was significant. That's made a significant difference for us. Once we do that, then we add back the equipment. Now, this, when I say equipment, I mean the 7,374,000, just acquisition of equipment and replacement of equipment. So it's not capital, not our capital budget, but it's what's in our operating budget that we're adding back for assessment calculation purposes. Then we look at our debt service, and our debt service, I believe, is $2,000 less than last year, but we're coming in at 27, is when it's finally gone. That's when the total amount will be gone. And down at the bottom, you'll see we've calculated the percentages by community based on our October 1 enrollment. And then if we go to the following slide, we can look at some of the revenue sources that we use. Now, Pembroke Insurance reimbursement, we've been doing that since 2014, and that's based on the split with Pembroke from 2004. So retired employees that were, we were currently offering health insurance to at that point, Pembroke is continuing to pay their share at 45.2% of that. So we bill them on a monthly basis, and they reimburse us, and that has gone quite, that's fine. That's working out well. The next item is estimated CGE tuition. I have decreased this amount because I've built in the budget note that there currently aren't any freshmen from Pembroke, and I don't know what's gonna happen with this year, the students' population this year, because they haven't talked April 1. So I have no idea what's gonna happen. So I had to, I used 75% of what I'm actually receiving this year. And that's less than what we had projected because of not being any Pembroke students, and less than the prior year that we had, $500,000 in revenue. So that has taken a hit this year. The next item is the purchase power agreement for our net metering agreement that we have. That's been in place since May of 2014. And just for informational purposes, we've received, we've, a net receipt of $2.6 million from that. So that has, that's worked out well. I've been using maybe the $250,000 to $275,000 for the past number of years. One of the things that I do is I contact Fisher Road Solar, who operates the facility in Dartmouth, and ask if there are any plant outages. Is a plant for the facility down? And we understand there's a difference between what's being generated in summer versus the wintertime. But we've been pretty fortunate that we haven't had too many of those events happen. And then a few years ago, when the pot flowed into it, and it was disrupted for a few weeks, and it maybe can make a difference. In the past years, we've received between, we buy the kilowatt hours at 10 cents, 10 cents for each kilowatt hour. In the years past, it's been sold on the open market between 14 and 17 cents. It's kind of fluctuated. Right now, we're in the 25% range. So, but I know this is not how it's always gonna be. So I have built in a slight bump for that, up to 300,000 from the 255 that we were at. Shared cost, that's the amount that will be collected from the three towns, and they're billed for the shared cost accounts between the superintendent's office and the special education office, and technology, those other items that float nurse, nurse leader that we've added in. That is the amount that will be coming back to Silver Lake as a revenue source for those costs. And then the 8.4 million is the state aid that we talked about, that it's been, it was an increase over prior years. It's going quite well. And then that missing block is the assessments. And then if we go to the next page, we can see a similar example of the information, but on a pie chart setup. In it, we filled in assessments, and so we can see that almost $20 million is in assessments to our towns.
That's a nice way to view it. But I like that visual.
Yeah, it does, it does need it. Yeah, it kind of tells you how you fill in all the pieces, and the puzzle all comes together. And then if we go to the next slide, this, this is our draft FY24 assessments. And if you look at the changes that have happened, Halifax's increase is $1,097, the 0% increase. Kingston's increase is $222,533.08, a 1.9% increase. Plington had an increase of $130,186.11, at a 5.5% increase. The contributing factors to all this are minimum contribution changes, the state aid that we received. And in the case of Plinton and Halifax, each had an increase in their enrollment. Not significant, but they each had an increase in their enrollment. For Plinton, that's, it was, I think it was a 0.6% increase, so that's what has contributed to their their increase being higher than the others. Then if you put all those together, the total increase of the assessments, 2423, is 1.8%.
I'd just like to note for Plinton that last year, we had a negative 7.26 increase, and the number you see for our assessment for FY24 is actually less than FY22. So we have to go all the way back to FY21 for that really to be an increase for Plinton. And even then, we're at 2513. And now he's back in 21. So I know it's not a big number for our town, but if you average it out, it's really not. And with Christine showing us the assessments this way, Madam Chair, this was what I was saying by, we need to take an opportunity here to give our localities a little bit of breathing room, but also the amount of money we're getting from the state and any other community, this kind of opportunity would require an overhaul, something that we've never proposed as a school committee. And hopefully, we never will have to ask our communities to do so. It's not sustainable. It would be asking way too much from our towns at this point. But we really need to take a look at these state funds and see how we want to take advantage of this opportunity right here, right now, to reinforce some of our programming here at Silver Lake. I think with the assessments you're seeing, with the budget that the superintendents created, Christine's presenting to them, we may have an opportunity to add in some of those positions or add back some of the positions that we've talked about cutting out in the past. And I'm chiefly thinking about looking at that middle school foreign language teacher and what the implication could be to the assessments, to the towns, and the overall budget. I really lamented the fact that that wasn't something that we could add into the budget prior to knowing the extraordinary relief we were gonna see from the state this year. I'm not asking to spend the $740,000 and then put another 3% or 4% on our towns. It's not what I'm advocating for at all. But I think we can still give some breathing room and also invest in our students here at Silver Lake. Don't forget, again, that this number will not decline in coming by years because of the held harmless provision of the state house.
Your last comment there, Jason, will not reduce. That's with certainty?
Yes. It's state's action.
Okay, and then a second question. Christine, you built that new number in here? You scrambled to put it together?
No, I have not added in, have I added in this additional person? That is not included in this.
The additional state money is not here?
Oh, no, the additional state money is, I'm sorry.
Okay, I know it was very recent. I wasn't sure if you had time to update to give us...
No, this includes all state aid, but this is, this is all current information.
Version one.
And this also includes, we did update the budget for all the items that were voted out at the shared cost meeting.
Yes, okay.
Including the float nurse, and there were a couple of contract changes.
Correct.
I did reduce, yesterday, I was at a Mayflower Municipal Health Group meeting where they reduced, well, the insurance increase is gonna be 4.5%, and I had built in 5%.
Okay. It looks much more palatable. Now, scratching my head, what, what changed behind the scenes that I wasn't aware of?
The funding.
Yeah, I heard that on Yance.
This right here is a game changer. You have to remember, with our budget, 300,000 is about a percent. And with the state giving us 3/4 of a million, that took 2.5% right off the top.
And the additional reimbursement for transportation.
Transportation's huge.
Yes.
And fully funded, again, homeless transportation, so if we can zero that line out again. Did we already do that, Christine?
Well, you know, it's funny, I was gonna bring that up later on, because that's an economist's sounding, some troubles this year. The reimbursement comes in the following year. This doesn't, doesn't help us this year. It does go into the following year, and when it's for the prior year, it's, we can't apply to the budget or the revenue, but we do, it is considered miscellaneous revenue in the year that we receive there.
And I'm just gonna ask one more time. We, I know what you said to me earlier. So we can, we can bank on these numbers, Ways, Means, and nobody else is gonna be able to change what the governor put forth.
If you look at all of the current House dockets and Senate dockets, because they're so early in the legislative cycle right now, they haven't even gotten formal file numbers yet, all of them are pushing for even more than this. So, for example, this is the first time in over 10 years where Circuit Breaker has been fully funded in the governor's version of the budget. Now, I know Circuit Breaker doesn't affect us at the regional level, like it doesn't the elementarys, but usually, we have to wait all the way until almost the end of June, beginning of July, before we get that final Circuit Breaker number. We're actually advocating for that to increase to a 90% reimbursement and reduce the threshold for that money. And we are pretty confident we're gonna get some movement on that. We're right now negotiating potentially the $564 million add to the education budget above and beyond what the governor put into her budget using the fair share money. We are in active negotiations right now for those dollars as well.
And what I do want to add is that the governor's numbers are traditionally at the floor.
Yeah.
And that's, that's been proven in the past history.
Senator Tarr from Gloucester is someone I'm working with right now to also increase that per people minimum increment that we always talk about to 100. He wants to fully fund regional transportation, so we could even potentially see more money there as well. Because transportation is the other side of the fair share menu, and we're really trying to work right now on setting some guidelines for how those dollars can be spent. And right now, it's looking like 6040 education, transportation. There's some ideas that it'd be 51%, 49% still in favor of education. But these are ongoing conversations that are showing fruit that should bear soon, hopefully in the next budget cycle, if not beyond. I mean, our budget revenues for this fiscal year, where everyone's saying, you know, we're heading into a decline, it's 4.4% over benchmark. We're up 4.4% over what the estimated revenues for the year was, which is why we're seeing supplemental budgets come out of the state house right now. There are two supplemental budgets of quite a bit in the past two months. One of which, by the way, would extend open meeting opportunities, because I know some committees were concerned about that. And the other one was to fund the Free School Miss for All program, because it was gonna run out of funding before June 3rd. So the state is investing the money there and trying to be very careful that how they're making those investments, because we realize we might be at a high point. So, yes, like Christine said before.
Are there any questions on the assessments or the calculation or the numbers that we use for revenues?
So also in your packet, you'll find, at the last meeting, we were asked to prepare a list of items that might qualify for ESER funding. And so we've prepared that list for you tonight. In addition, you'll see a version two of the budget without that world language position added, but with the healthcare amount of 4.5% as opposed to 5% that we initially presented. That reduction has been taken. That was about $14,000. And the shared costs have been added in, bringing our our new total to a 4.19% increase. So again, we created the list of items that could be funded through ESER, but we have not actually removed them from this budget. We're waiting for your feedback as to what our next.
So I guess I'll ask the question since that was the point you brought up, the idea about the ESER funds helping to supplement the budget. And again, this was prior to understanding what we might see from the state. And I know I pushed it a little bit beyond your comfort level with the use of ESER. So realizing now that we might have a little bit of breathing room, is there anything on the list you're presenting to us tonight that you would say, I would actually appreciate not having to use ESER funds for this? With the new reality we're dealing with?
Sure. I would, I would say definitely, I would like to remove paper cut. And I would ask you to consider the Arrow Hive replacement, because these are recurring costs.
Question?
Sure.
Christine, you said it was a 1.9% increase on your slide we just had with all the adjustments, and then it just became 4-point something.
This is the assessments.
Okay, assessments at 1 point.
1-point net increase from 23 to 24.
On the assessment side.
The assessment.
4% of the budget.
Madam Chair, do you read it, Chris? Paula?
I'm sorry? Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
Educate me.
So the bottom-line budget number that we might come up with on paper might work, disturb. Okay?
Yeah.
But once you put into account the state funding, we need to look at the net increase to our towns through the assessments.
Correct.
Last year, for example, Plinton, the K-6 school, we came in with a 375 budget increase that had a net zero effect on our town's budget, because we realized an equal amount of dollars from our increased state aid. So a little bit of conversation and sharing of the numbers and our fit on in our select board, and disaster happens, we leave out a town. So open communication and transparency is gonna be key. If we bring forth a 5.5% increase, we're gonna have to show the state gave us 8.8, and this is the effect on our town's assessment.
Absolutely, absolutely. They're not in sync as much as they usually are.
Exactly, exactly. Because of the extraordinary.
Yeah, Jill, I'm okay with what Jill's saying on ESER. I think, pushed us over the past couple of years. I think, pushed us over the past couple of years, things such as technology that are recurring should be built into the budget. So that would be the arrow hives are frequent, I think. I don't know what paper cut is. I'm sort of leaning on the two other bigger items, which is the tech hardware for the middle school and the high school. I don't know if that's Chromebooks or what part of hardware that is, but I know hardware has a limited lifespan, which is why it sometimes doesn't fit in the capital plan anymore. So I'm okay with putting those back in the budget, because every year that their key components needs to get sort of cycled through.
Yes, we did. We really, we tried to take everything and anything we could, so while they're not subscription like expenses, they are things that we regularly replace.
Yeah, and I'm okay with stuff like that going into the budget, frankly. That was my push for the last couple of years.
So let me just understand, if, if we take the arrow hive and the paper cut out of this list and put it back in the budget, then the remaining amount would be funded through ESER funds, correct?
Yes.
And, and these items are not already in our budget?
They are currently in the budget.
They are currently.
They have not been removed yet.
Okay, so this is going to bring that percentage down?
Down.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to be sure. That was my understanding, okay.
And then if you have it caught on, I'm going to advocate for putting in.
Right.
The foreign language teacher at the middle school.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I don't know if we need to cut all these, because again, we're, these are cuts that we thought we needed to make, not with Jason's comments, but with the 1.9 assessment. With a 1.9 assessment, this really doesn't feel like it needs to get cut as much and use ESER funds. The only question I have is, make sure we use ESER funds somewhere.
Yes.
But I don't know where. That's not really my splitting hairs, is just to make sure we use it.
Right, and I would trust the superintendent to utilize the ESER funds as she saw fit.
Well, we did submit a grant with input from, with survey and input from the school committee. So, one of the things we're also going to mention to you is if we were to make such, these types of changes, we would have to file for an amendment. And we just wanted you to understand that, that it would still be subject to approval as an amendment if in fact we changed the grant to reflect these items. So.
So Paula, being the person who brought up the whole idea of ESER in our last meeting, I'm more than happy to say, let's not bother at this point.
Spending any of this ESER money?
No. And just so you know, in the governor's budget, there's recommendation for temporary changes to some regulations and laws to allow school districts greater flexibility to spend the remaining federal funds and better coordinate funding streams without facing state funding difficulties. So, the governor is also aware of the difficulties around spending the ESER funds, and they're going to try and take away any of the state-based regulations and laws to allow Ryan and Jill to utilize those funds in a more streamlined fashion.
Do we need a motion? Is there any more discussion on it?
It's budget guidance, most of the motion, is it?
Are we voting our budget tonight?
Okay, I make a motion.
We need to vote our budget tonight?
Yeah, I make a motion that we do not utilize any of the ESER funds for the items listed by the superintendent.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that? Go ahead.
Does that tie her hands anyway, if she decides it?
I think we're framing her up.
Oh, I would drop. I recently. Yep, I make a motion to ask the superintendent not to use ESER funds to try and reduce our budget percent tonight here with those ESER.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, others in favor? Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was. Okay.
Okay. So, did you want some numbers?
Sure.
Do you want the budget as it is?
No.
Yep.
No, because he.
I want to see the budget with the middle school foreign language teacher and see how that would affect our assessment values.
Can you do that and share it with us?
I'm going to do my best.
On the fly, here we go. Can we go over the baseline budget first?
Let's go.
Yeah.
I know.
Jill, Paula, can we go over the baseline budget that you created that did not put these, those ESER funds to work and kept them out? And then if we considered Jason's exciting information, I'll give you credit, and we decide to pivot and consider some of the adds from the principals, we can go there?
Yes, agreed.
Put Christine on the spot.
And that's all we can ask.
Thank you.
That's all we can ask.
Sure, so the, the middle school, if you go back to our, we just used the slides from our original presentation, and we added the, the assessment. But if you recall, Principal Coet recommended the addition of a, a world language teacher and provided us with some data in terms of how that would impact students who would now be able to take world language, past and what would happen. And then she also talked about how that would impact the middle school electives for the upcoming school year. So that was the middle school request.
Was there more than just one teacher? Or other things, or no?
There was an inclusion teacher for the six teams. There's five including teachers, there are six teams. Then I also asked for another half of an adjustment counselor, but I think we worked that out through revolving possibly. That was the entire ask.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
High school?
High school.
I didn't have a staff request. All equipment and supplies.
They're all included in the budget.
All the ESER stuff?
And they're all included in there now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're good.
I'm agree.
Anything else up the sleeve?
If I could, a selfless pocket of world language teacher would also help the high school, so, for sure. The benefits all of our students have.
Is there any other request for the budget?
That's it?
We weren't ready to.
I feel like we're putting on the spot to add something here. I'm listening.
Yeah, yeah. It's a new feeling for us.
Yeah, my notes are tonight, because anybody who's ever sat next to me before knows I spread out my notes every night. And usually I don't have a problem with words, but historic opportunity kept popping up on the notes. This, this is our chance to invest in our kids without saddling our communities.
Yeah. Yeah? I agree with you, Herb said, Jason, I just hate that we're doing this, needing to vote for budget, I think, by next week to meet the 45-day town deadlines. So, while we're poking and prodding at the principals over there to give us something, I don't know if we need the week to do it or we want to consider, because I agree, the ask for a, a middle school language teacher sounds great. I mean, I don't disagree with your principal argument at all that it's necessary. I was more on the defensive of where do we fund it from? And I'm still very, if you know me, I'm very cautious on spending in a permanent assessment that we have a teacher that we need to then not just fund for one year's bonus, but to give me the confidence that we will have this in '24, '25, '27, '33, to fund this more permanently. And that's where I'm, that's where I'm, in the last 20 minutes, trying to digest it.
Let me just try and lay your views.
Is this close for all of us?
I also have the data from the past 10 years of our assessments and our budget totals.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lucy.
We are, as a committee, a very fiscally responsible committee. Our 10-year average of budget percent increase is a 2.94. Halifax's assessment over 10 years has averaged a 2.3% increase. Plington has been a 2.9% increase. And Kingston, over 10 years, has been a 4.0% increase, but you have to look at your town's road.
Oh, absolutely.
In the past 10 years.
By headcount.
There is, there is nothing in our figures that say that we're kicking a can down the road. What this says is the members of the committee, past and current, have been very good financial stewards for our towns and advocates for our students. And, you know, Becky has some other requests on her docket, and I would love to give her all of those positions, but I have the same concerns you had. But with my understanding of world language departments, I'm sorry I kept saying foreign language, I've got here. We have middle schools on the South Shore that kids are entering freshman year in level three of their language with three to four options of languages. Becky said last time we were together, there is a chance that some of our eighth graders will have no foreign language opportunity next year, and they will enter into world language language. They'll enter into our ninth grade as a level one student. Now, some people struggle with world languages, have to repeat, this puts them really behind the ball. And some of our kids who excel in world languages, this doesn't provide them the opportunity to double down and take those AP courses and really shine in their strength there. So that's why I came really, to really advocate for that position, that one specific position. Not just go to the candy store and not blow budget, but very thoughtfully want to put that back on the table for consideration by the rest of my committee friends.
So I guess, and in, not thinking about it as a candy store, I, I actually like that analogy, because having sat on school committees for so many years and trying to be fiscally cautious and fair, is there anything else, and I don't expect you to answer this right now, do we want to give administration, as you indicated a few minutes ago, we had tentatively penciled in a meeting next week, if we couldn't come to conclusion on the budget this evening? Go ahead.
Point of order.
Yes.
Is that within the 45 days?
Yes, that is our.
Sixteen, that still means sixteen?
I think sixteen is the deadline, yeah.
Yeah.
Next week.
That's why we, if we had to, push came to shove, and we had to go out one more week and meet one more time, is there?
I mean, how much time did the administration have to think as we're talking right now? Or was the administration sort of on the defensive with ESER funds still in that mindset from our last meeting? To pivot a little bit, say, yeah, what else, what else we use in terms of like a pair or two? I know we cut a couple pairs a few years ago, that kind of.
Quite honestly, what we ask, what we ask our principals to do is to tell us what they need. And the budget is based on, we don't put anything into the budget that isn't what we need to maintain level services. I just want to make sure I'm choosing the right words.
Yeah.
Everything we put on the side are, are there, those are the things that they felt were most important. And this year, the request came from Becky in terms of staffing. That was the world, world language teacher, a special education teacher, and a .5 adjustment counselor. So, again, I would, I would ask the committee to consider those positions before looking for additional positions.
So that was a, what did you say, .5 adjustment?
.5 adjustment counselor and a special education teacher.
Hey Kayla, do you have a?
I would also just share, since our last school committee meeting, you know, Christine and I have been in touch with our booster groups, this would also help with our coach equity for next year.
Yeah, we do need to adjust on that, I guess. Fairly small, I think, but yes.
That would, that would need that verdict.
So, I, I had a suggestion, we've done this a couple of years in the past, we can come up with a nominal figure. So, if we can understand the cost of the foreign world language teacher.
You're so funny, because you never make a mistake. You're, you're, and it's not a mistake, you, it's a phrasing.
You rent Dungeons and Dragons at 6:30 in the morning, you're not always there.
I agree.
Yeah, so.
It's like he said.
So, you know, if we're talking about some of those dollars for the equity for the coaching positions, if we can ballpark that, can you give a number to Christine that she can put through the flow chart tonight? I don't think we need to come back as a committee. We can go to some other writers and come back to it and vote lightly.
And you're right, we, in the past, we have voted a number, because, thought of mine, we vote a number. We vote one number. So, I, actually, Jason, that's, that's a very good approach for this.
But usually every dollar has a spot, we vote a number, as opposed to adding $50,000 for sports, whatever it might end up being, in terms of bringing all the coaches in-house.
I think it's very clear, it'd be very sad if world language teacher wasn't added.
But not foreign language.
Here, here.
Paula?
Yes.
I do have the calculation, just so we can have a frame of reference for that. So it brings our budget to $29,517,058. And then what it does to the final assessments is that Halifax's increase will be a .4%. It'll be an increase to them of additional $20,000. Kingston's increase would be 2.2%, it's an additional increase of $37,605. Plington would go up to 5.8% increase, and that's a, that's a $7,359 increase.
What, what was Plington, I'm sorry?
Went up to a 5.8% increase. And overall, FY '24 versus '23 assessments went up 2.1% with that. But we have it at 1.8.
And that's just adding the world language?
That's just adding world language.
So that was a 2.1% global increase?
Yes.
On the assessment?
On assessment.
A net, a net assessment increase.
Okay, do we want to keep it at that, or do we want to add a buffer in there for anything? Or, do we?
That rate's going to be down this time, so I, you guys know more about that.
Well, no.
And is the buffer maybe, if this is the floor, and I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize, if this is the floor of what we could be receiving, is the buffer what might come in as the icing on the cake?
That's what my line of thinking was too, that, like, you're saying that the 750 from the state, like, that's, it's going to, it could go up, might go up, probably will go up?
Yeah, most likely.
That might be the buffer.
Yeah.
The way I look at the numbers is a little different than Christine's, so I just want to be clear with you. When I gave you my number, I combined charter seven and regional transportation and our reimbursement for charter schools, but then I take away the charges from the state for our charter schools and other items and give you the net increase of state funding. So Christine has to do it a certain way for actuary reasons, I do it bottom line. So the bottom line that I came up with was 740,623, but my number for regional transportation was a little bit lower than the one Christine came up with, because I don't have the expertise that she has. I'm just a guy who plays with numbers.
And I did just want to add that, in years past, the final numbers are different than the governor's numbers. We traditionally do not change our assessments after that, right? So it just flowed into the following years of actual care.
Right.
Just because of all the votes that have to take place and the timing and all that, so we traditionally don't alter our assessments for that.
It covers shortfalls here and there sometimes.
For the following year, yeah, when it comes into FY '24, we could, would make a difference, yes.
So that question could already be built into what we might get from the state.
Right.
So we could, I mean, 2.1 global contribution, 2.4 for Halifax, 2.2 for Kingston, and 5.8 for Plington. I mean, I'm, I'm very happy seeing those assessments, and I think, I think our communities will understand where we're coming from with it and take a breath, because this could have been a lot different if we did get the state aid contribution.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, the last meeting's tone was much different than tonight's.
Yeah, that's, that's, if I could, so I'm thinking if we get this bump from the state, consider a one-time bump that recurs in a sense, will it be forgotten next year when the budget's getting built and we would just give the towns that flexibility back as opposed to taking that 750,000 we get today permanently and maybe utilizing it for services we've been really not even considering but pushing off? You know, I know we have conversation for CTE and InfoTech or what's it called? Technology, what's the exact name of it?
The computer program.
Computer programming, ITF, yeah, I forget what the name was. Things like that are going to come through as an expense in the future. If it's three years out or four years out, I don't know. We just get Allied Health on the books for the second teacher this year. That would have been a hard, like, last month, it was hard to put that $40,000 in even the contract if we needed to. And we're considering, you know, we had a language teacher, world language teacher. So I don't want to let this just flow through the budget this year or next year without me looking at opportunities where we've really pinched and pinched and pinched. I'm sitting here, I'm like, if you're looking at class size and stuff, it's like, okay, is there a class size issue that we have? When I see, you know, a high of 28, do we need to mitigate that? I don't know, because the average is like, you know, 19 or 18, and the average, what I got was, because if you have a 28 as a high, you probably have a 12 as a low and an 18 in the middle. That's a scheduling thing. So I just don't want to miss this opportunity to kind of say, okay, you want to add something. McCann made a great point, we do have the, the opportunity, I'll call it, to restructure, to work on the stipends and the coaches, sort of equity to other opportunities. Our coaches pay by the talent of paying, retracting the best coaches from teams or retract the best teachers. I mean, that's kind of, you know, we added Dave last year, someone we probably desperately needed, didn't realize how much we needed Dave. Is there some position like that that the administration's been saying we haven't had for a while? I mean, I'm thinking openly and it's just like, on the spot, we've got sort of an opportunity.
Right.
Yes, I...
I know we're tight on the admin side of the space for you, but...
Sure, I, the, the problem is, is obviously space, but, but the reality is, is I think we all recognize the issues with the complexity of the budget, the number of budgets, and the very small number of accountants that we, that we have. I mean, it literally is.
Small stuff.
Four separate budgets, assessments, and then all the things that school districts normally deal with in terms of their business department. And grants as well.
Grants management.
So, again, if you're looking for a wish list item, that would, that from, I think from our perspective, off the top of my head, that would be useful.
Yeah, I think wishlist is maybe too rosy. But yeah, I mean, where you, where you see a strain that you said, I can't add another, you know, accounts receivable person because we don't have a grant, a grant request person to help department heads go find more grants. Those typically pay for themselves, but they kind of get funded out of the budget year one to get on the ground. To really say, oh wow, this is really going to work.
Yeah, it, it, it creates delays. The, the reality is that it's a disruption of services because we're not able to provide services in the ways that we would like to because we, you know, we, we, we try to answer questions as quickly as possible from four different school committees, four different towns.
Right.
And it's, it's difficult. And we're, am I describing it accurately?
Yes.
Yeah, I think my take is trying to win a week, but only because it's such...
Well, I think we could, rather than make more of a knee-jerk reaction this evening, we could have a more, and I like the wishlist item that you, that you just shared as well. We could have a more well-thought-out with numbers perhaps, rather than plucking out of thin air.
Right.
If folks were, I mean, we could do this virtually if we wanted to next week and conclude the budget.
Does it have to be on Thursday? Because I know we have events at the high school and...
High school?
Next Thursday already planned. There's the band concert and the basketball game.
We would just have to be earlier than that.
Early would be great for me.
I'm surprised I've got...
Early date-wise or time-wise?
Oh, time, if we were stuck on Thursday.
Okay.
Do it before Thursday even, I've got, I don't know about other people, but I've got more flexibility other days.
We can do that also.
Yes.
Tuesday?
Would be great for me, I can run it off.
She'll, she'll check on her mattress, can't wait to tell.
She's in the heat of seven days that night.
We could, after 6:30, because you and I, we have negotiations today.
See, we're heading on already.
Give you the extra hour to 7:30, how's that sound?
So that, are we talking perhaps a virtual on the 14th?
You're a math teacher.
Is that what we're thinking?
Uh, question.
Sure.
Do we have time to post in all three towns?
We get it in tomorrow morning.
Halifax closed.
Plinton is too, right?
Plinton's closed tomorrow.
You worry about the small test. You'll learn.
This might be unpopular, but I think we can finish this tonight. So if, if you have a nominal figure that you think could potentially cover this position that you've, you've just brought up right now for the table tonight, which it sounds, by the way Christine is reporting, it probably should have been brought up in the budget earlier for us to take into consideration. And that's not any fault of Christine's, I know she likes to be, you know, very good with the finances even from her department, so. I mean, are we looking at a $50,000 addition to the budget and we just put it to bed tonight? And we can also count on some of the above-the-floor budget from the state coming in to help us fill in some of those other areas. I'm just sensing we have some consensus here at the table, we have all of us here tonight. This is the most important thing we have to do, there's nothing else on the agenda. No offense to anybody else who's on the agenda there, that's as important as this.
So I'm the flying the ointment. That position would be a shared cost position, not solely a Silver Lake position.
Which position are you referring to?
I'm sorry, Christine, one day you might forgive me.
If she added somebody, they added somebody to the accounting team to relieve the stress.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so here's my other side. So Chris, coming back to the towns this year and saying a 0.4, a 2.2, into Plinton, a 5.8 after a negative 7. We can say, look, next year, there's going to be a couple of things we're going to come and ask you for. Take a breath this year, you know? And lay it out, I mean, an accountant, take care of these things, make sure that our i's and d's and r's cross. And we can count on some of that extra funding from the state to supplement and backfill. Some of the, the things you said might not be big enough, but might make a sense equity-wise for the coaching situations.
Yeah, it makes sense, I just worry, from a town's perspective, something else might come up. Right? Some other expenses, they say, oh yeah, we'll wait till next year because we're tight this year. And that's where we're just part of what they deal with, so.
Hang on, where are they, where are they part of?
Logistically though, I mean, even if we did want to add the accountant this year, which I personally be all four, but time-wise, we would have to get Union 31 back together. I don't think we have the time.
And, and so it impacts, and it impacts an elementary, but also it's not, so I mean, you're talking, you know.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
It's a good idea though.
Sorry, Chris.
Sorry.
I, I think we should go up the bottom line tonight and I also am always for giving everybody a little breath. I, I hear your concern, so I definitely, I definitely do, I definitely do. But I think if we have the opportunity to come out.
Just as a reminder, we were talking about potentially cutting some positions.
Right.
We're not cutting those positions, we're adding one and we're still providing a very reasonable assessment increase to our three committees. This is a rare opportunity.
It's a rare opportunity given to us by the state, I think, that their funding commitments. Doesn't mean we don't have needs here at the district.
No, no doubt.
I think it's just a matter of recognition of the timeline, we're not a friend tonight. I personally would like to go above the 29,517 that Christine just gave us in terms of the total budget, the assessment of 2.1. I'm trying to think here, what else might come in, such as the, if we want to adjust coaches and assist the boosters, what they're doing, which I can elaborate, a lot of people need me to.
The administration, 60K, that's about 30K for Kingston and 15, and we done with it.
Yeah, my number was 85, but okay.
All right, go with it.
Yeah, I was just going to say round it off to 29,600, which is...
Round up.
Round up and it's 80, whatever, 83 grand more.
83, yeah.
Having a number for coaches potentially there, whether we do it or not, it's negotiations.
Right, if not, we'll find it, it's not, it's not, it's not material in this budget, it would find another home.
It's, it's rounding, it's rounding. A $29 million budget, 80 grand is rounding.
Yeah.
But it does send a message to the towns, which we're, we're holding on to it. That's what's on my point there, right? We're keeping the 80 grand, we're going to keep it, and if it's not utilized, then yeah, it goes back to an E and D and we have it in our lineup as a relative base point for next year to make things a little easier maybe.
Is there further discussion or anyone want to make a motion?
Is the consent, is it 83 or 85?
We're rounding up to 29,600.
Oh, so all right.
It's 82,000 change and change, sorry.
Christine's going to language for motions.
I do, I was just trying to...
Yeah, I'll just start closing, I would hope that. Do we want to hold off on making the motions until later, Christine? We can take some other business and come back to the vote.
Yeah. Because we need the assessment numbers exactly.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we table this for the moment to come back to and continue on with some other items from the agenda.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, thank you. This committee's working through this wonderfully tonight, I think it's a great discussion. Okay, Ryan, I, I think we're back to you.
Thank you, I just have a quick update. Today was a, for Silver Lake, a half-day professional development day for teachers, so staff spent the day working in 7 through 12 departments with curriculum coordinators, designing, understanding by design units using EduPlanet 21, which is our curriculum mapping software. So staff were focused on collaborating on units and generating high-quality performance tasks. So, again, we really appreciate the opportunity for staff to work together 7 through 12 in some departments that didn't have that 7 through 12 leadership in previous years, like special education, world language, social studies, and our arts department. So it was a successful day for our 7 through 12 staff and it was, more steps were taken to accomplish our strategy for district improvement, which aims at a fully articulated curriculum PK through 12. So just wanted to provide that update on how staff time was spent this afternoon.
That's all. Thank you. And Dr. Prue?
So our, the Department of Education made the 2022 school and district report cards available and our principals sent out notices to families and the reports can also be found on our website. In your packet, you'll see a list of school committee dates and you'll notice three joint committees set up at a similar time as we have done so in the past, with the first one to consider common budget presentations such as special education and technology, the second one which tends to focus on shared cost agreements and shared cost contracts, and then the third one which tends to be a review of our district-wide goals at that point. You'll notice that we've moved out the joint meeting to February 15th and not on the same night as Silver Lake because we, we received feedback from other committees that it would be helpful to have it on a separate night and not feel that, that rush. Some years we have a quick meeting, in other years it's more complicated. So to keep them separate seemed to win favor with, with our other committees.
Which meetings in particular? Shared cost?
It's a shared cost, maybe.
Would that also be the meeting where we talk about some of the contracts as well?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring up that in the past, admin review sometimes says to review those increases and changes before you, so they could help with the discussion as well?
Yes.
So we could just loop that back in for next year's process.
You said February 15th, is it really February 8th or am I looking at?
Let me look at the thing, was it changed in the calendar? I just want to make sure it's...
It's supposed to be on different dates, right? Oh, I might have put that one in before, I'll, I'll drop the one in.
Okay.
Probably the one I put in before another committee changed it.
Okay.
And we'll be sure to schedule admin review on the same night. Or in advance of that meeting to help, might be even better.
All right, do we need to vote that?
The calendar, yes.
The calendar, yes, but this is, not this, the list of school committee?
The school, I'm sorry, the school committee meeting calendar, we, we have voted it in the past. I don't know if it's required, but it, you have in the past.
We voted at Halifax.
Okay.
If we want to stay...
Yeah, consistent.
Except the meeting schedule.
Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
On our packet, the color coding for which committee is meeting on which day, there is no key.
So maybe other one.
Oh, okay.
Yellow, green.
Never mind.
I knew it was summer, it's not a sheet, yeah.
All right, I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was voting on.
Any other discussion on it? Okay, we have a motion in a second, right? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, okay, thank you.
And that's it?
All right. Thank you. All righty, new business, we have the regional agreement amendment update. So as we know and as we, you know, we, we voted at a joint meeting last month or so, we are in the process of amending the regional agreement, which is very, very dated, it's very aged, to incorporate the pre-K program into the regional agreement. So that we are legalizing, codifying, however you want to phrase it, the way we've operated for decades in the regional agreement. We have been working diligently to do two things, the house cleaning of the regional agreement, which again, the language is very old, and adding the pre-K program to it. In order to meet the spring town meetings, we would have to be done with it in the next week or so. We've gone through two iterations, Russ has provided the regional agreement to Desi. They have returned it with changes at its comments. He has gone through those, fed it back to Desi, Desi came back with more changes. We are not going to meet the deadline to have this as an article for the warrant for the spring town meeting. We're going to have to host fall town meetings to have this in a updated and good state to share with the towns and get it passed at town meeting. We just don't have enough time, we simply don't. We had a call with Desi on Monday and we explained the town meeting process, the dates of the town meetings, and clearly they knew where we were with the, the editing of the document. When we are done handing it back and forth and we and Russ in this committee are good with the changes and Desi is, it actually then goes to Desi's legal department. The final say, the final review is Desi's legal department. That's not all going to happen before our deadlines for spring town meetings. So I wanted to share that update with you. So, um, I wanted to share that update with you. Um, we'll go out to the towns. We've already started going out to some of the key figures in the towns to let them know that this is gonna be a fall town meeting item. Go ahead.
Um, two questions.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I understand that there are multiple levels of complex issues that we're trying to iron out.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I guess I'm wondering why, what, like, what if the town doesn't have a need for a fall town meeting? Are we as a, as a department forcing that with this sole issue? And if so, why the urgency that I can't wait for the annual? Why does it have to be a special and, and at the expense of the individual town?
Or, or of Silver Lake, that, that would remain to be seen.
Um, yeah, so, like I said, the second question, who picks up the ticket for the?
And, and that remains to be seen. If the towns have another item that could be coupled with this, that's a different answer. The reason it has to be done is Desi gave us December first of twenty-twenty-three to have the pre-K program, um, figured out, have our situation fixed. Because don't forget, what we're doing right now is, is technically in the eyes of, of Desi, it's technically illegal. So, they have given us a timeline, they expect us to stay within to fix the situation. And they're gonna hold us to that timeline.
So, if we ask Russ, if we don't have a town meeting, is it defaulted to the affirmative? Like typically is, like if we don't have a budget meeting, it's an affirmative?
No, not for change in the regional agreement.
Like that way?
Right. And, and even when we do go to town meeting with this, all three towns must vote in favor of this change. It's not like our budget where two of the three can move it. Regional agreement has to be all three towns. It's not ideal. I, I wish we were going to spring town meeting. But with all the efforts of everybody involved, um, you know, Russ and Desi in, in particular, and Christine's got a, a piece as well, um, from the, uh, the budget and the assessment perspective, um, it's just not gonna happen, there's just not enough time.
Does Halifax not have a fall usual?
It's, it's very.
But we did it last year.
Right, it's sporadic.
Oh, Kingston splits it usually, that's why I ask.
Yeah.
They've split the budget items from the non-budget zoning.
Yeah.
Whatever, to the fall.
We try to get it all in the annual, and then if there's like expense that needs to be.
We've done the same thing, then you go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, so we split it.
So, I guess my question, my next question is, God forbid, what happens, one town says, um, what then what?
Well.
Cause we all know.
Yep, yep.
Positive thoughts.
I know, I know, I just wanna be prepared for like, or we don't get formed, or what's something.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're working through that. We're, we're working through that.
Okay, cause I think we wanna have an answer for that, I mean.
There's, in, we will, when we have the document in a form that we can discuss, we, we do need to have a, a conversation. And we have to have a, um, you know, God forbid, a plan B.
Yeah.
Yep. All right. That will be a standing item on our agenda going forward. We're gonna move it under old business, and we will have updates on that topic every meeting going forward. Okay, um, reports of special committees. SLEA, I know John's not here, hello.
Hi, Ashley Ferrara. Um, I'm the vice president of high school, I see you here, Coach Sucker. Um, good to see you all again. Um, Becky had joked earlier, like, that we're here first for always coming. But Paul and I enjoy ourselves when we come here. This has been the best meeting yet with Jason talking about the seven thousand dollars, so thank you for that. Um, but no, I appreciate everybody talking about like, what, what can we do? Like, where are the areas, like now that we are, I'm solving, like, where should we go? So, just appreciate everybody's thought process and that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Admin review?
So, uh, admin review has posted for a meeting on March twenty-third at six P M via Zoom. Uh, we're still not gonna meet remotely at this point. Hopefully that will be extended, um, especially for our subcommittee. Sometimes it's just easier way to get it all together. I love the bigger group meeting in, in public and in, in person, but sometimes this is just easier. We're gonna really, uh, work with the superintendent to start getting the materials together to send out to all the committee members for her evaluation. Um, we're gonna establish a timeline for members to determine their evaluation and the contact person or people who they will be sending them to. Uh, typically it's the chair of admin review or our, um, administrative assistant to the school committee as well. Uh, we're gonna have to set up two executive sessions for admin review after that point. Uh, one is to go over the overall evaluations, uh, to basically give me some guidance as to authoring out, um, the consensus. And then I'll have another executive session with admin review to present them the consensus either, to make sure that they all agree and to make any changes, uh, that they think maybe I left out or didn't highlight to a satisfactory amount. And we will need to have a joint meeting, which is open session, to discuss the consensus evaluation and vote it. Per our new policy, uh, all of the evaluations have to be backed in by May first, and the vote has to be taken eventually first, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Would, um, would you like the joint meeting to be our April joint meeting, which is already scheduled?
No.
No, you want a separate meeting?
Yeah, we can't, we won't have everyone's evaluation in by then since it's until May first. And I, I don't know with the March twenty-third and then the April, if we have enough time to get it all in, come to consensus, so no, that.
Okay.
We're gonna need one probably sometime after town meetings, but before January first. It's probably what I'm looking at.
Okay. When do you wanna?
So, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if perhaps we don't need the April meeting because we only scheduled our year review to try to get in before elections and the admin eval. But if we can give you an update in June, we'll actually have more complete information.
So, we, we would vote the evaluation in the, in the month of May.
Mm-hmm.
So, that, that is my take about the policy ways of the timeline. But again, I'm the chair, I have to work with my committee members and see what they want as a timeline. So, I just basically write the, the agenda for our meeting on next week, this.
Okay.
We'll wait and see what the decision is, and then we'll go from there.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, CTE?
There was no meeting, no update.
Okay, you're, you're very quick tonight as well. Um, chairman's report correspondence, I have no correspondence to, um, make you aware of. Legislative agent?
I gave my report, thank you, ma'am.
Yep. Uh, negotiations, um, we do not have, um, an executive session. We have nothing to share, um, formally this evening on that. PAC?
Uh, we had a meeting last week. Um, based item was, um, there were two big items. We submitted our treasurer's evaluation, uh, we got an exemplary. And, um, there were updates to eighteen administrative, um, office staff and custodial positions. Um, so we voted on those. That was pretty much it, the enrollment numbers were pretty level, um, the financials looked good. So, that was about it.
Very good, thank you. Policy?
Do we have the second read of our policies?
Not yet.
So, since it's not posted, we'll pass over that and we'll do the next one. Yes.
Okay. Revolving funds, um, we have not had a committee review of revolving funds for quite, quite some time. So, my thought is there, um, I think we should do an overview of them, um, in a coming meeting. I'm going to suggest that we do it in a meeting, um, you know, a couple of months out. Um, but I think everybody should be aware of, you know, the CTE and the cafeteria revolving accounts, what they are, what they're for, how they operate. So, we would invite in Elliot and, you know, everybody who has a math or everybody who has a revolving account, discuss it, make sure everybody is aware of it, understands it, et cetera. Um, we're gonna have some committee turnover in a, a couple of months. So, my thought process there would be after we re-organize to schedule that for an agenda item at that time. Safety.
Safety, facilities fees and revenues. Uh, I was invited by Plington Town Properties, which is basically their version of safety fees, facilities and revenues. It's their capital planning, um, committee in town to discuss with them, um, some of our long-term capital. So, I did bring up the administrative building. Uh, I did bring up the potential for an athletic complex with turf fields here at Silver Lake. And also our constant concern worrying about our longer treatment plan someday may be needing some serious overhaul investment. So, uh, we discussed the current debt load and, uh, what half debt will be rolling off and how, um, we and the safety facility fees and revenues look to approach those dollars so there's no bumps in the road, um, to address those new programs and those new expenses as the old debt rolls off from the building projects. Uh, they were very, um, appreciative of the fact that we're being cognizant of those dates and, and trying to make sure there's no other flows of human money that are currently coming up versus what might come up in the future. Uh, I also brought up the three hundred thousand dollar warrant item for the gas-fired HVAC units. Um, I just wanted to make sure we're on target to submit those warrants to the three committees. Agreed. I have one. Do we have time for all of those? Can we put a price for them?
Could you repeat it, Jason?
I, the three hundred thousand dollars we took off the capital plan for the two gas-fired HVAC units. Mm-hmm.
I'm suggesting it goes to, to the towns with our, the town's quota.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly.
We did, uh, vote that, that the school committee made a two meetings ago to remove it from the capital plan for the fourth of the morning.
Mm-hmm.
If, if.
We will, we will check into, we will look into it.
If something happened, I, I understand sometimes things get messy, but, uh, they, they were willing to understand and accept that and, and help us with the patch time we can as well. So, um, would I appreciate the thing? Since they reached out to me, it was my hometown, I didn't feel the need to come back to the committee and ask permission to go speak to them. But, um, I would appreciate authorization to accompany, um, members from Kingston or members from Halifax to discuss some of these capital plans when they go talk to their finance committees or their, you know, property, town properties committees as we approach the budget.
You don't, you just need us to say yes, you don't need to vote for that.
I, I just, I didn't want to do it without the permission of the committee since it's the resident or the chair of the.
Yeah, yeah. I, I see no problem with it. I think it would be wonderful.
Right. We have one scheduled, Kingston.
Kingston is scheduled for?
Uh, April fifth. At six o'clock, the FinComp in Kingston. I think it's general budget stuff.
It's, it is the general budget for the elementary and the secondary.
Yeah, doesn't mean thing, doesn't mean we can't.
Alright, cause they're gonna.
Add something.
Kingston closes their warrants on Monday.
This coming Monday, let's show.
Oh, so they need to know about the HVAC, ASAP.
Yeah, the timing of that meeting, I, I, I found a little odd cause we've already, we will have already finished all of our budgets.
Yeah, so, Carl can probably help me with this one. Uh, usually every department in Kingston meets with, uh, the FinComp to discuss sort of, the FinComp's positioning and voting for each town budget, so.
Yeah, preparing, I didn't mean to.
Preparing for town meeting.
Okay, so, you've already seen the budget and they share with us they're gonna support it or with their.
Correct. And oftentimes, you know, you go back and negotiate within the town, in a sense, to fix the police budget so that the police chief can adjust that for his own.
Mm-hmm.
Or street trees and parks adjust theirs on their own. School's a little more cumbersome because of going back to school committees. So, I'm surprised we're so late in their schedule because we can't, we won't have a, a chance for them to push back, oh, no, this is too much. Try and cut Kingston's assessment by a hundred grand.
Yeah, we're married to.
Yeah, they're either gonna agree with us or disagree with us, and we got good news to them, so.
And I just wanna clarify how I said what I said, um, when I spoke to Town Properties, they asked some questions and they spoke heroically, but they took no action or voted there.
Yeah.
Just wanted, didn't wanna put words in there at all.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okey-dokey.
I can do the treasurer's report.
Quick question.
Sure.
Um, Jason, do you recall the exact, uh, capital plan numbers? Is it what we have on two-nine, five hundred and seventy? What do I have there, five seventy-three, six eighty-three?
Yeah, I reported, that's the number I reported to Town Properties.
Perfect, okay, that's what I thought, I was just checking for our.
Votes.
Our votes. I, I reiterated to them that the lens that we looked at that number through was the safety and equity lines.
Perfect, yep, yep.
And they understood and appreciated that.
Good. Thank you.
Oh, no, no worries at all. Okay.
For tonight, there are, let's see, seventeen accounts payable warrants totaling one million, three hundred and one dollars, nine hundred and fifty-nine. One million, three hundred, one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eight cents. Two payroll warrants totaling one million, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-nine cents. For a total of three million, one hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and two dollars and eighty-seven cents. There was an estate last month on the, um, form that was given to, according to February, so we're gonna reread February to the minutes. And there were eighteen accounts payable warrants totaling one million, seven hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars, sixty-two cents. Two payroll warrants totaling one million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. For a grand total of three million, five hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars, twenty-eight cents. Thank you. And I do have the information of what's gonna happen to the assessments.
Okay.
If we add that amount, it would bring up the overall increase of two, from twenty-four to twen, from twenty-three to twenty-four, two point six percent. Halifax would be the increase of point eight, and that would be a forty-five thousand dollar, uh, forty-six thousand, seven hundred dollar increase over last year. Kingston would go up to two point six percent for an increase of three hundred and eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents over the previous year. And Plington would be a six point two percent at one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and nine cents.
Okay.
Of course, has a significant capital.
So, I asked you last number.
Cut off the press.
Hey.
Are you ready for some motions, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I, um, I just wanted to say that I appreciate your leadership in the discussion. I know you reached back to us and said that you appreciated the dialogue and the way we conducted ourselves, but it's your leadership that is the guy to be careful with this conference.
I, you, thank you for that. I believe combined, we are a very good team. Silver Lake has always been an excellent, excellent team, and thank you for that.
I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four operating budget of twenty-nine million, six hundred thousand dollars as the amount being necessary for the operation of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of zero dollars of E and D funds to fund the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year capital plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Hold on.
Tell them this is not right.
Nope, it didn't to me.
What did you say for an amount?
Zero.
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 The number was a five hundred.
Mm-hmm. Let's just make sure we're not crossing streams here. This one looks like, like this looks around this.
I thought my template was awesome, but I guess I missed it.
So, do this one?
Yes.
This one, and this one.
Yes.
And do we need to do this one?
Yeah, that's just to accept the assessments as presented.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
I withdraw my motion. I would like to motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of five hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars of E and D funds to fund the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four operating budget.
Five seventy-three amendment?
Five.
Five ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
Five seventy-three amendment?
Time out. Nope, that says to use E and D to fund the operating budget. Is that how it's supposed to be worked?
I know, messed up today.
No, it's okay.
Which one do you want, Jason, this second one?
The one down the bar.
Oh.
Should I?
So, this is the one that should be zero.
Say this one number up here?
Yes.
Okay, first.
Jason, you bring the seven. Seven.
Oh, yeah.
Five seventy-two.
Eight-three.
Do my European seven.
Oh, sorry, I didn't cross it. I can never find where you want it.
I withdraw my motion. I would like to make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of $573,683 of E and D funds to fund the 2023-2024 fiscal year capital plan.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye?
Thank you, everyone. For bearing with me. I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the 2023-2024 construction budget of $1,485,928.38 as the amount deemed necessary for the construction costs of the regional schools in the Silver Lake District for the 2023-2024 fiscal year.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Two more.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept the assessments as presented. Assessments are determined using the regional agreement. The regional agreement identifies the statutory method as the method used to compute the assessment.
Second.
All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee approve the use of $0 to E and D funds to fund the 2023-2024 operating budget.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Wow.
That's everything? Okay. All righty, Union... I'm sorry? Union 31, no meeting? Approval of bill schedules? Done that?
There were no single signatures.
Okay. And do we need the executive?
Did we do the financial report or was Christine asking about the budget?
We did. Oh, we didn't vote it. Yeah, we jumped right into the budget. Yeah, she alluded to something, but...
We're saying to do it now?
Sure.
Get to take care of this. Tonight, I was going to quickly just review what's changed since last time because some of the things that developed throughout the year would kind of consisted for the first half of the year. Custodial maintenance areas, we are seeing some deficits in those areas. For the, and that's developed because of the need for the buildings and the supply chain issues, as well as the increase in some of those costs. Also in the budget, homeless transportation is starting to show a deficit. It's that one this one right now, and it's from a variety of circumstances that have brought it to this point. I did want to mention that we do receive reimbursement at 100% now. That's what's built into the 24 budget as well, but we received that the following year. So I can't use it to offset this year. I can work with it as it feeds into our E and D in the following years. There are small deficits throughout the budget and most of them will be absorbed in their categories, so that shouldn't be an issue. And any of those, maybe like maintenance, homeless transportation, that may increase. We will keep a close eye on that to make sure that we work within the constraints of the budget. That was all, I was trying to be brief so that we can get the ones that are not due.
Christine, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
The, what page am I looking at here? Page six, the special ed? That looks like that.
Is it contracted services or transportation? There was a deficit both in those areas.
Contracted services.
That has been a result of some additional services that have to be provided. And I think it was mostly occupational therapy, fiscal therapy that needed to be provided. They had no budget for those, and issues that were high would be in the spectrum of budget.
Okay.
And the transportation, we had talked about how we worked out including those increases in the funding of this budget.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other questions on this?
Motion to accept the financial report as presented.
Second, okay. No further discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Thanks, Christine, for all your work.
Thank you.
For everything for that.
Okay. We voted the February 9th minutes already in the earlier, so we don't have a need for an executive session. Boy, in the end, I couldn't tell you last time we walked out at the end of regular session. Okay, dates to remember, April 7th, Good Friday. April 13th, 5:00 PM, joint meeting. April 13th, next Silver Lake meeting. And April 17th, the 21st, spring vacation. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second or are we staying?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, folks.